Welcome, everyone, to the work session of the Aspen City Council on August 11th, 2025. We have a few items in front of us today to discuss. The first item there is the, oh, sorry, this is moving too fast, the consideration of ballot language for a dedicated tax for public education, the regional granters collaborative update and off-cycle request recommendations, nonprofit grant policy and programming, and city manager selection council memo discussion. So those will be the items we will be dealing with today. And the first item up is the memo school district ballot question discussion follow-up. And the one thing I want to make clear for everyone in tomorrow night's meeting, I will ask my counsel just a nod aheads, a straw poll, is it okay to move the action items to, right after the consent items on our agenda? If that's a nod aheads, we'll take a formal motion to do that tomorrow, but that way we can let any of the applicants or any members of the public know that there is a change in the time in the posted agenda. So there will be, for your benefit, from the school district, a little bit before you, but not as much. Action items are usually at the end of the agenda. We appreciate that parents may want to comment, and that would be late for them. So we'll work with you on that as best we can. Thank you very much. And if you, this is, I guess we're leading right into it. We all, let me get the memo up. I always struggle because my computer at home is a touchscreen, and this is an arrow, and I hate going back and forth between the two. So let's see if this will link me in, and it's not. Okay, there we go. I think we all have talked considerably about this issue. We all know significantly the challenges our school district is facing because of the state cutbacks. We know the state will be having a special session and potentially having more cutbacks because of changes in the tax law of Colorado that came via the big, beautiful bill. Appreciate all that. I'm hoping they can find a nice solution to that little billion-dollar hole it created in the Colorado budget. I think the question before us is related to the third of ascent renewal request and the doubling the third of ascent to a .60%. Pete, did you have any lead-in comments for us? We all have the memo. We've, hopefully you've taken a look at it as well.
Yeah, I think the council's had a number of conversations on this to date, and I think tonight's objective is really to determine how the council would like to present this on the ballot, and what forms and what percentage essentially that we're looking to target. So there are options in the packet tonight, and obviously there's a broader picture with the aspect that there's some other sales tax questions going forward as well in November. And so the council is obviously just weighing how best to support the school district while still balancing some of the other community asks and needs.
Okay, and let me make one other comment, is that Sam Rose is not with us tonight. He is traveling, and he has previously stepped away from these discussions because he was employed by the school district. And then...
So, yeah, basically, there's in the packet a couple of options. One option is to move forward with two separate questions for voters. One is to just do the extension of the existing .3%. So it's basically extending the current sunset date beyond the 2026 year and going to 2031. Gives an additional five years. That is a question that seems to be having general support from the council based on past conversations, but it does not address any additional funding for the school district. So there is a separate question that's worded in the packet, which basically says contingent upon passage of the extension of the existing, do the voters want to support an additional X percent above and beyond that amount? And that is for council to decide what that percentage is and dollar value that that would generate. We can definitely work on that. And those questions could both be presented to the voters at this November election. The other option is to write a combined question, which is the third question in the packet. That basically is an all-or-nothing kind of proposal to voters. So either you support moving that question forward, or basically only the status quo survives, which is a .3% for one more year at this point. And then it would have to be potentially revisited for next November. So there is a plus and a minus with asking two questions versus one question, and also in terms of giving voters essentially greater choice or less choice. And so it's up to the council how it would wish to proceed.
Okay. Thank you for that introduction. Pete, the other thing I'd just like to kind of ask, and I don't know if you can give us this answer right off the bat, or maybe take a look at it, but when we look at the example of the single question in the packet, shall this, and there's blanks in these questions because we're having to fill them in, but shall the city of Aspen taxes be increased by a blank in 2007 by whether amounts are, by imposing an additional city sales tax of rate of .3%? That's, yeah, so do we have any idea what that number would be of this?
Yeah, so the current .3% brings in about $4 million today. So we can adjust up to that .3%, depending on how you want to move the needle.
Okay. And so if we go straight forward with a third of ascent, that question would reach, shall the city of Aspen taxes be increased by $4 million in 2027, whatever amounts are generated annually thereafter, the rate of that? And shall the city sales tax of $3 million approved in 2020? Now, the only thing I was wondering is this question doesn't mention how much the current .30 is raising?
That's correct.
And would it be something that we could put it in there so the voters would have a better idea, you know, that, and shall the .30 voted in 2012, 2020, 16, continue to be collected, you know, and then approximately $4 million annual as well?
I imagine that you could include that dollar amount. It's a question of, do you want to include it or not? There's obviously aspects of whether you would or wouldn't want to include that.
Okay, well, just, it feels a little less than transparent without having that amount in there, because this is a question asking, in total, should the city of Aspen be contributing $8 million to the school district, and at the same time, the Snowmass Village is being asked to contribute $1 million?
That's...
Via, via these additional things beyond the mill levy override. And of course, as you guys know, the concern has been there's just, the sales tax question could be asked at less amount, should we be able to include the mountains, the airport, the airport business center, and these sort of areas? So I just, that was my only larger question about, you know, and I mentioned this sort of thing last time, but it's really hard to come back from a failed question and ask something that's almost the same question the following year. And so I would be, I concerned with the single question as being just simply live or die. But I am concerned with the inequities. It would be kind of continuing. But I will support wherever majority of this council wishes to go with this. The bigger question that I've continued to kind of wrestle with is, what are the future needs of the city, and why municipal sales tax has generally been left just to municipalities? Now it's been expanded to fire districts, and we're going to see that one. But, you know, few people talk about it, but it's been percolating for a number of years. The city will need to build a new reservoir for water supplies. We have a three-to-five-day surface water supply now. We're currently in process with permitting additional locations as we've moved our water rights off of Castle and Maroon Creek. That will be a very, very expensive proposition for the city. And whether it could all come via the ratepayers, or whether it's a bond question, or whether we need new sales tax to support it, that is something this council is facing. I mean, we understand school district needs, and we haven't said, hey, these are all our city needs, too. It just, it sounds like it's, you know, everything runs along, you know, to complete the armory project, we're going to need to do internal borrowing on the entrance project. We will be with the contracted Jacobs, only having about two and a half, $3 million left, I believe, that is not allocated towards the entrance. And we know we may have great additional concerns there, just as our community is concerned as well about the traffic problem and the wildfire evacuation. Those are only a couple of the things that we know are in front of us. So that's the context by which, and because of which, I have expressed my concerns. So who else wants to weigh in? Bill, thank you.
Thanks. You know, we're dealing with changed conditions here, which I wish weren't the case, but they are. And as such, I think we need to be supportive of funding our schools adequately and amply so that we are delivering great educations to our students and our community. So I will support this, but I want to express a couple of concerns and...
Which question, two questions or one?
I'll get to that. Thank you. I appreciate you pointing that out. You know, first of all, I'm really concerned about the total tax rate. If I'm understanding this correctly, if everything passes as proposed, including a .3% increase for a total of .6%, then I think we will have a 10.35% sales tax rate in the city of Aspen. I'm concerned about that. I think that's one of the highest in the state of Colorado. I think, I think we're setting precedence that sales tax rates could continue to increase further beyond that. So I remain deeply concerned about that. I floated with this council, and I don't think that I have support, but please correct me if I'm wrong, for looking to other sales tax rates, that we do have the ability to pose questions to our electorate on whether we should be adjusting those to make up for these potential increases. My read is that I don't have support for pursuing those questions to, on the ballot. But again, please correct me if I'm wrong. That is something that I would be interested in pursuing if others were. Assuming that we do not have that support, I would pursue two separate questions on the ballot with the .3% increase that the district has requested. My expectation of the district is that they work to correct the inequity of the sales tax boundary versus the school district boundary. And my, I think that this is mostly something that they need to pursue with Picken County and the Picken County electorate. But I would expect that by supporting this, the school district would work to do everything they can to sort of correct that inequity that I just don't see as reasonable. I think that anything within the school district boundary should be assessing the same tax that we are assessing within the city of Aspen boundary. Happy to answer any sort of further questions if anyone doesn't understand my points there, but...
Yeah. No, I would comment briefly if that's okay. And just to point this out for everyone, the questions as are currently written are through the year 2031. So that's kind of a six-year window. Should they go forward, I mean, this will become something the school district is pretty reliant on those sort of dollars in the future. And I would anticipate that whatever we ask, one question, two questions, there is a window of opportunity to try to do that sort of real roundtable gathering between Aspen, Snowmass, Picken County, and talk about what other methods could be used to come forward. I mean, I understand it's a challenge for you. You've had a lot of things thrown at you at once, and the idea that you're asking for the mill levy override at the same time is a question all district voters will be answering to, who are property owners. But it's something that, it would be in my interest the best to see it over time become a countywide property tax that's the same in Snowmass Village, and Aspen, and county areas. And the very limited portion of Picken County that is in the Roaring Fork School District, they could contribute it to them. I'm sure they're having budget issues of their own. And then contribute the rest to the Aspen School District. And that would get us to a true equity position. And there might be time to work on that in the meantime, and there might be time to work on that, again, between now and 2031. Should the .30 pass, I understand it that the state legislature, at least currently, has a phase-out program for the support they've been giving you. And so there would be some opportunities that it's not all going away at once, but it is being phased out, but we never know what they're going to do in the special session. So I'm quite aware of that. So that's all I kind of wanted to say. This is creating a window to be able to hopefully come up with something that has continued to work through a foundation, a nonprofit, but that starts to create greater equity in our, in our system here. And the long-term and permanent support that the school district needs, not just these kind of continued stopgap efforts. Others, comments on the type of ballot question we should ask? Christine, are you ready? You want to jump in?
Thank you for being here again. We've had this conversation a number of times now. And I'm still in support of putting this on the ballot. I'd like to see it as one question with the full ask of .6%. I am, I've said this again, I think we're not, we're not necessarily agreeing to a sales tax increase for our community. We're letting our voters decide that. And I think that's our job up here, is to let our community weigh in on these sort of decisions. The school district is aware of the risk of putting this as lump sum on the, on the ballot, and I think is willing to take that. And we've heard feedback from them. I've heard feedback already today from board members and at the school district about their support in going for the full .6%. So that's where I'm at. And I just, on the sales tax side of this, I, Aspen is cost prohibitive in so many ways. I'm not sure a slight sales tax increase is a real deterrent for people coming here, spending money here. It's, it's things like $1,000 hotel rooms and $70 chickens that are making Aspen unattainable for a lot of people. And so I'd like to see a couple more cents go towards our students and our teachers and our schools.
Thank you. Appreciate that. John?
Um, I'm, this is a tough one. I see the logic behind doing the two questions. I also see the logic in putting the whole kit and caboodle on the ballot. I think I'm leaning towards Christine's position. I do agree that taxes should be collected in a more equitable manner, ideally, accounting-wide property taxes, Rachel has just pointed out, and I hope we can get the ball rolling on that. But right now, our schools are in crisis, and just passing the .03 is just going to keep our school district from sinking. And it's not really good enough for me. So right now, I'm going to support putting, going with what the school district is asking for and putting the whole thing on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I interject?
Yeah, please.
It's my understanding, John, and Christine, and Rachel, that the school district prefers it to be two separate questions.
No.
Did I misunderstand that?
No.
We're happy to speak if you want us to, but we don't want to...
Yeah, yeah.
I may misunderstood that, then. Okay, well, I'm supportive of whatever the school district prefers on the ballot, which I know is the full .6 ask, if it's one combined question.
Okay. You know, thank you for that clarification, Bill. I've heard from some people, it would be okay to ask two questions. I've heard others say they prefer one question. So I'm hearing a lot of the same. And there's always a lot of nervousness going into any election. I've said it from the very beginning, I want to see the school district have the money it needs. And I will go along with Christine and John and support, and you now, Bill, as well, the single question. I, it does give me concerns, because to the extent if, it's very hard for anyone to have opposition to the school district, but there can be some very subtle things out there that people realize. And I, you know, I thought the red brick was just such a natural with no increase in taxes, and, you know, and that only passed by three questions, three points. And we only found out later, you know, people were like, well, why is the school district selling it to us for so much when we already paid for it once before? And that was kind of the Suluam argument of the day. And it was unfortunate, but it really was in the background. And to have one, something that has turned out so great, like the red brick, by only three votes, you kind of realize how, what mood voters are in. And we're kind of seeing a lot of that with the drop-off in tourism that is happening, and consumers saying they're looking for less expensive places to travel to. So I am concerned with it, but we will see what the voters have to say. And we will, we've made a decision. We'll move on to the next item. Pete?
Just one clarifying question. You had asked if you wanted to include the dollar value for both the existing .3 as well as the additional .3. You want us to double-check on that to make sure that, I know for sure you do not need to put the dollar value for the initial .3. That's already an approval and just moving the sunset, but is that an important aspect that you want?
Well, I'm supportive of that.
You are?
Yeah. Others?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, unfortunately, throughout this discussion, we've kind of gotten a little bit of a, well, why isn't the city doing more for the school district, as opposed to saying, well, we've given the school district $31 million since this first started, that we're contributing at a high greater ratio than other school district members. And we certainly do, through the tobacco tax and supporting healthy communities, through the Parks and Recreation Fund, support a lot of the activities in the...
Security officer.
Security officer from the police department. We've, we've been strong supporters of the school district and intend to be so in the future. And we will, you know, to your question, Bill, I think you saw the big work session on the open space fund, and I would just hate to try to have them battling the environmental movement in the community for the students, and to pit those two against each other. And certainly, other funds have been suggested, like EOTC, that that's already allocated in many ways to Snowmass being able to build its parking garage, or if we ever want to fund the free bus experiment, or greater cars to the intercept, buses, the intercept lot, even now, we have to draw on our own resources. So I'd hate to do that. So I'd hate to do that. I thought, boy, we could ask the state of Colorado to drop its sales tax collection, but I don't think we'd get very far with that. Since you cut our schools back, do you mind cutting our sales tax back too, you know, so that we can fund them more appropriately? Okay, no, it doesn't. And, you know, the one thing I really would say is I think, I'd love to see our school district a little more involved with the state legislative process going forward because the mill levy override they gave you was radically insignificant, insufficient for what they were taking away. And that should be increased. And as I've suggested before, even the ability to consider selling some of your units to some of your teachers will create a little more security for them, return some money to you that you could put back into new housing. And just to move from a rental situation to an ownership, even when it has a move-out clause, when you're no longer working with it, is a real economic advantage to individuals. You know, whether you're getting a car loan or a credit card, you check whether you own or you rent. And it would tell people that really, we want you to stick around here. So that would require a little bit of a state legislative change, as I understand it, to go from all rental to be able to do deed restricted sales. But that's a way to really bring some new money in. And other than that, I think we're done with this item. And staff has direction.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, yeah. Back to my packet. Afternoon. How are you?
Good. My name's John Barker. I'm the director of the Strategy and Innovation Office, and I'm joined by Ariel Lyons, our grant administrator, and Alyssa Farrell, the Administrative Services Director. Do you want to give a quick acknowledgement to Grant Steering Committee member Tracy Anderson in the back? And a few others will be joining us shortly.
Thank you.
I was not sure, y'all were very efficient with your first items, so I gave a little bit later time for a few others to show up. So a few folks should be trickling in here over the next few minutes.
Okay.
And we have my first ever double feature work session today, so we have two agenda items through one presentation. So we do have some dedicated slides for asking for council direction. Of course, feel free to interrupt us at any time with questions, but just know we do have some space held for formal discussion when that time comes. So with that, a quick agenda. The first half of this is going to be an update for council on our Regional Granters Collaborative, a group of granters focused in the Upper Valley and our work to both increase our collective impact as well as two specific requests that that group has received and made a recommendation for your consideration as well as a consideration of other boards and elected bodies within the group. And then we'll move on to a broader overview of the grants program more holistically, some background, timelines, and then four recommendations from the Grant Steering Committee as well as two questions for council related to new, potential new programming.
Thank you.
So with that, none of this would happen without our Grant Steering Committee. So this presentation begins in the middle, and the end is all through our volunteers. Really, really grateful to have the guidance of Ann Mullins, our chair. You all are familiar with her. And we also have Chris Mangus, Judy Clausen, Morgan Fixel, and Tracy Anderson serving on this committee. So the recommendations we'll see a little bit later in the presentation are really driven through their passion, the things that they've noticed about our grants program and community needs. And, you know, once we take the direction back from you all, they'll help us turn it into actual implementation. There's also ideally 15 other people, volunteers in the community who make this program run. So one of the strengths and challenges our program faces is the immense amount of community volunteers that support the program. So we have five, we have three different review committees who actually assess our grant applications. And as we'll get into a little bit later, it's a significant commitment from them, and we're very, very grateful to have their continued support. It's hard work. So for a quick overview for this part of the presentation is we are requesting your input on the recommendation from the Regional Granters Collaborative for two specific requests, one of which is from Lift Up for $2.5 million. And note, these are regional requests, not requests directly of the city of Aspen. And another from Community Health Services for $90,000. So some quick background on this group to have you, give you a little bit of understanding of how we got here. This is a group that consists of members currently from the city of Aspen, the Aspen Community Foundation, Aspen One, and Picken County's Healthy Community Fund. The group was, has been operating for a year and a half or so, and it was born out of a recognition that we need to collaborate instead of, you know, creating our own programming that kind of matches each other. So what we found is we were copying each other's good ideas instead of actually working together and maximizing our impact. So we started to figure out ways in which we could collaborate together. And there is Ann, our chair.
Yeah. Welcome. We just went through the first item pretty quickly. It's not John's fault.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're not late. We were fast.
So we've made a lot of progress on that front. We've done a lot of trust building as a group in order to really focus on community issues together and how we can use our collective and individual resources in order to address this. We've really come into our own with our current focus of creating a system to handle these off-cycle requests that were coming to you all, coming to Picken County, coming to the Aspen Community Foundation Board and others. And we really realized there's a need to provide an initial review of these applications and encourage holistic, multi-jurisdictional giving when appropriate. So that's what we're doing right now, but we have big ideas for how we can collaborate in the future. You know, this could be things like creating a common application as a group, right? So that our nonprofit organizations here only have to submit one application, and that's reviewed collectively with potential pooled resources in order to make sure that we aren't giving the same grant as the city and the county for the same request and able to, you know, really reduce the administrative burden both on the applicant's side and on the organizational side. Okay. So just a quick overview of the eligibility requirements that this group has set initially for these types of requests. So three core things stood out to us that are both time-sensitive and really not well addressed by our individual grant programs. So that's a sudden loss of funding that covers a critical service. It's creating space for filling community needs in an innovative way, and capital requests specific to the health and human services space. So we've created a standardized application that's housed with the Aspen Community Foundation so that each applicant answers the same questions, gets in front of the same people that then we as a group meet and review for recommendations to our respective bodies. And just one other thing to note, this is not intended to address requests being made specifically and individually to just one organization, but requests that are coming, you know, to each body themselves. So now, a little bit of background on the Lift Up request, and then I will remind council that this is background. Feel free to ask questions, and then we do have a formal discussion slide as well. So the, a few months ago, this group received an application from Lift Up for $2.5 million focused on eliminating the organization's debt and providing them the operational flexibility to continue providing services throughout the greater valley. The group had robust discussion about this application. It was our first application we reviewed, and I bet it will be the hardest one that we reviewed for quite some time. Ultimately, we decided that it did not meet any of those three criteria and is not eligible in our view for funding. However, this is a, food insecurity is, of course, a critical service in our community. And the group feels very passionately that there needs to be support for this service. It just doesn't necessarily need to be towards paying down an organization's debt. And so what the group is recommending is to work with a third-party expert in the space and create a RFP to document, outline, and ultimately hire an organization to provide this service in our community. Once that is, that is set and we understand what those costs would be on an ongoing basis and we have someone potentially available to take that, would be to create an intergovernmental agreement between governments in the service area to fund this directly and ongoing into the future. Now, we have honestly no, you know, no firm amounts that we expect this to be. Included in the packet was a preliminary proposal from, that estimates this cost from Aspen to parachute to be about $600,000 a year. So I wanted to provide for council what we think an ask in the future could come back to you all in the $100,000 range. But again, that is very preliminary at this time.
John, let me ask, if you can, how did Lift Up get in such a position that they were so far ahead of their skis to take on this level of debt without a real income source?
Yeah, that's a great question and one that I'm not an expert in answering, so I'll provide my understanding with the caveat that it's at least partially incorrect. But my understanding is that it was related to their expansion of warehousing spaces in Glenwood, Rifle, and Parachute, and that those facilities became much more expensive to operate and did not generate as much revenue as they expected.
Have they been working on any sort of consolidation plan or dissolution and, you know, rebirth type of that you see various organizations do over time?
We believe that they're working on that, but frankly, that was another reason why our application was, our recommendation was to not fund this request is because we had those same questions and those were not addressed in their application.
Okay. I personally agree with the staff recommendation here. I would note we have Harvest for Hunger now up at the Health and Human Services Building, working on food services. Now, it's not quite as extensive, and they're going to need support too. But I think that it'd be important to try to step in and do some counseling post this decision. So that, you know, they sound like they're, some of the assets, maybe there's just a disposal of, some that are valuable, it should be transitioned to a new agency or the new form of Lift Up, whatever really is happening going forward. And again, I will support the organization's effort, but I would consider in the future some sort of stabilization, small grant that helps with a transition period. I mean, just clearly, that would be the goal, to not have this just be a huge fire sale and to assist these guys with how do you get back on track.
Absolutely. And to be clear, Lift Up could, and we would hope they would apply for, you know, respond to this RFP, just we would be ensuring that these funds would be going towards food insecurity instead of, you know, towards debt reduction.
Yeah, I can understand that. Do others have questions or comments on that item?
Just, I want to support any food security issues that we can, and I will go along with staff recommendations as well.
And I want to introduce Lindsey Miesch, the Human Services Director from Picken County. So she's one of the members of the Regional Granters Collaborative, and is probably better positioned to chime in on any technical questions about these organizations than us.
Thank you for being here. We just got a little ahead of the schedule, so it wasn't that John gave you the wrong information. He thought we were going to have a...
You want me to come up?
You don't have to, but we really aren't very far into the memo yet. Okay. Bill?
I have thoughts that sort of apply to both these off-cycle requests. I don't know.
Yeah, go ahead.
The other one first. I don't really need to hear it personally, but...
Well, go ahead and make your comments. Yeah, I mean, the next item is a $9,000 partnership request. It's not really a killer.
I should start out with saying that all of these requests and all these grants...
Can you adjust your mic, please?
Sure.
Hi.
All of these organizations, all these requests are important, are meaningful to our community. I should say, almost everything we've heard, I think, is important and meaningful and isn't frivolous and goes to great causes. And I'm supportive of many of them. I'm personally very supportive of Lift Up and their mission. I really struggle with the city of Aspen's role in this grant-making thing that we do and the bureaucracy that goes along with it. It's not the most efficient way to support nonprofit missions. The most efficient way is for individuals that are passionate about specific causes to give money to those organizations directly. You know, we spend a lot of time and money and effort in distributing these funds in a way that we think is fair, according to these processes that, John, mostly you've developed over the last few years. And I think you've done a great job doing that, but it's, you know, takes time and effort and staff time and volunteer time to do this. So, you know, this sort of ties into my previous comments on the school district question is like, should we be reducing our sales taxes so that we aren't in this business and just get out of this business of making grants entirely? Is this really the place of the city of Aspen to do these things? I don't know if anyone wants to explore that question with me. I would be interested in doing that, but whether it's related to a sales tax decrease or not, I think that it's an important question that should be asked because it's not really the role of a city government to distribute funds to nonprofit organizations. I don't know how prevalent that is amongst other municipalities or isn't, but I've always sort of struggled with this one. Assuming we continue doing this, or irrespective of whether we continue to be in this business or not, I think the off-cycle request issue is tricky, and I don't think that we should be spending our time on this. Nonprofits are always going to have sort of urgent needs for money that don't align well with our cycles, but I'm not sure that's where, we shouldn't be sort of their default resource for funding. And if it doesn't align with our off, with our cycles, I'm not sure we should be entertaining it at all. I think our staff has plenty of other things that they need to be focused on, and this takes a lot of time. So regardless of how passionate I am about Lift Up and these other important needs for our community and communities throughout this valley, I'm just not supportive of either of these off-cycle requests. And I would like to open it up to the rest of you to see if you're interested in talking about whether we should be getting out of the grant business entirely or not.
Well, I don't know we're set up for that larger conversation right now. We certainly can discuss it during the business, the budget cycle at the coming up. I would like to say that, you know, if we're looking into the second memo about how various communities distribute funds, it's pretty clear that cities and towns do contribute to nonprofits and do help support the nonprofits, understanding that those nonprofits are actually very much, as you said with Lift Up, helping hold the fabric of the community together, whether it's kids' programs, whether it's after-school programs, whether it's all the sort of mix, but, you know... But, you know, we had a whole list, as John had presented, of what different communities do. And so I do think it is an appropriate role. It's been something going on for a long time. And I, you know, while it's could be a $2 million reduction in something, that's really not much of a reduction when you think about where it's really going to go and what we would be losing from the other side of that. I do want to comment when we get to that discussion about should it be off-sourced to some other community partners to be allocating this as opposed to the citizen review committees? And that I have a lot of questions about, frankly, in terms of what are the makeups of those boards and who qualifies and how they're selected? And do they truly represent people who've lived with need and understand need and that sort of thing? So that's been a bit of my concern. And should we start working with community partners to allocate city revenues, city tax revenues from our public? How would we be able to assure some seats on that board, some representation, things like this? So I think there's a lot of further discussions to be had in that. But I do appreciate the work and the research you've been doing for that. For myself, I, again, I can support the decision on Lift Up, but for community health, to my mind, this is part of a result of federal actions and withdrawing money that had been very traditionally granted for these sort of public health services. And so I, you know, I see it as a very minor amount of money to backfill cervical and breast cancer screening in our community that's been going on for a long time. And I look at community health, you know, being here long enough, before we had the extra clinics from Aspen Valley Hospital until before we had a new Aspen Valley Hospital and before we had Healthy Mountain Communities. Our community health, I knew restaurants that took the whole crew up for AIDS testing on the same day, because that way no one would be afraid and we're all getting the test. And this is when that epidemic was just really breaking out. And I know so many individuals depend on those facilities for reproductive health care and women's health and women's safety. So I have no problem wanting to donate $9,000 to help fill the gap, especially when I see all the other partners who are making those contributions as well. Others want to chime in on the community health grant aspect.
I'll do kind of both at the same time. We skipped on your presentation too. Unfortunately, I think we're going to see more requests come forward from local organizations as the federal government shifts funding to local municipalities. And fortunately, I think, or fortunately, I'm grateful at this point that Aspen is resourced enough to answer some of those grant requests. That said, I do want to follow staff's recommendation on Lift Up. I'm sure it was a very healthy conversation and trust your decision in regards to that and same with community health services. So thank you for going through that process.
Very good.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah. I'm all for the $8,000 off-cycle request for Lift Up right now. We have people that are hungry. On the second question, I'd really like to collaborate regionally as Boulder and Boulder County and Lafayette and Longmont are to administer joint applications. But as Christine's pointed out, Aspen is the community that has the resources, and that's, I think, why we're in the driver's seat and why we have the Grants Committee. So I'd like to support Lift Up in whatever way I can moving forward on both proposals.
And how do you mean by submit Lift Up? Would you, are you wanting a grant allocation to them at this time from the city alone or, again, just continuing to work with them towards their eventual resolution of $2.5 million of debt?
I would like to work together with them to resolve their debt, absolutely. I mean, what the memo says, I'm pretty sure our contribution would be $100,000.
That's a different topic. So that is related to a potential intergovernmental agreement to provide ongoing food insecurity services. The core $2.5 million request that I, we don't have a recommendation for what the city contribution would be to that. And as we're speaking with the Board of County Commissioners tomorrow on this topic, but as far as, you know, we know there is not going to be anyone in the Upper Valley supporting this request, which would mean the city's share of that would be significant.
I think the issue has become they're really not doing food distribution anymore in the valley.
In the Upper Valley.
In the Upper Valley. And they are requesting this for debt payment, not food service. And so that's the real challenge, I think, that we're all having with this. But I think a transition of some sort is really in order. And it's whether, you know, it's funny, I was up in Steamboat and maybe they stole the name, but they had a Lift Up thrift shop. And I'm like, is that connected to the lift shop, you know, I know of? You know, and but that one doesn't seem to be having, it's just, I don't know that they got too big for their own mission as opposed to, you know, it was started here in Aspen with Dick Fenton back in the day, who never believed there was a need, and then he realized there was a need, and then he became highly supportive. So again, I think they need to come up with a realistic transition plan, and I'd be happy to help participate in that at some level. But it's, there doesn't seem to be a plan other than, hey, if we can get all this money, we can keep doing business as we have. And I don't know what their ongoing income support would even begin to be, really, so... I think we have conclusions on those two, but you understand the council's interest in trying to see whatever assistance we can with them. There's tremendous assets. Now, maybe they don't need warehouses in each one of those communities, and they should dissolve some of the assets. But other assets, whether the delivery trucks or cold storage, those could be valuable for, you know, we've seen a lot of our mental health agencies kind of merge and change and shift, and I think this one is something that may need to merge and change and shift.
So just for clarification, are you asking staff to reach out to Lift Up and offer to assist with strategic planning for what the future of the organization looks like?
Well, I think the explanation to them of why they're not getting the grant would necessitate some level of counseling about future directions. It's not like, hey, we're not going to help you, good luck, if we have any expertise or any advice or what has come from your conversations with the county commissioners or with others about how do they move out of this mess, other than incredibly large grant requests?
Thank you.
Alyssa, what?
The, I think you've come up with potentially a creative solution here with the IGA that does help the need and what we're trying to solve for, which is food insecurity, without getting into the business of paying off nonprofits' debt, so I think that's great.
Alyssa has a comment here.
I wanted to clarify that there is majority direction and support for the IGA to pursue for food insecurity in conjunction with the second recommendation as well.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Oh, yeah, council majority. I think Bill's a no on this one, but we understand why.
I'm open to the IGA, but I'm not open to the off-cycle grant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then just a quick technical question on the community health service funding amount. So it's $8,091. There are two potential sources for council to fund that. That could be through the mayor and council contingency budget, or it could be through tobacco tax revenue.
I would lean towards the tobacco tax until we get closer to the end of the year with council contingency, and then we could, you know, always allocate that contingency back into the general fund or to any other needs that we'd like to at the end of the year or that seemed to pop up in the meantime. That's just me. How much do we have left in the council contingency, Pete?
Ooh, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but...
I think, I looked today, I believe it's around $150,000.
$150,000? When did our contingency get that big?
Well, yeah, we should...
Contingency's only about $33,000, $35,000 a year.
Okay. Yeah.
But you'll have the majority, I mean, you'll easily be able to afford that, or we can do it out of tobacco tax resources.
Oh, in contingency, sorry, that was for tobacco tax.
Yeah, you were thinking, I was saying tobacco tax. Okay, gotcha. What do other people feel like?
Tobacco makes sense to me and it has more money, so, yeah.
Right, I'm not supportive of this.
Okay.
And you're right, yeah, hanging on to the council contingency until the end of the year when we can...
It's a little more flexible money, depending on what we need to do. As long as it's within the boundaries of the tobacco tax, I think that's where it should come from. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, we're done with part one. Anyone need a break, or can we keep going?
Anyone want to take a break? Nope, we'll keep going.
Okay, all right. So request to council here is a little bit more broad. So we're requesting your input on some potential grant program policy changes and potential new programs. The outcome that we're trying to accomplish here, and again, this is driven from our steering committee, is primarily to ensure that our grant dollars are as impactful as possible and then increasing administrative efficiency. To Bill's point, this program is, it does have a large impact there, and reduce our volunteer workload. So I want to start with the currently adopted grant program philosophy and strategic focus areas. These were adopted, I believe, in 2019 or 2020, slightly before I became involved with the program. So there's an overall program philosophy that you can read above, and then each of the three grant divisions that we currently operate has a specific strategic focus area. The one that I want your specific attention on is the community nonprofit strategic focus area, as we'll be digging into a few potential improvements there later in the session. So we're going to dig into some program background, but I don't want to bury the lead. There are four primary recommendations coming from our steering committee that we hope to discuss with you today. The first is explore moving the administration of the Health and Human Services Division to another community partner. The second is to provide focus for our community nonprofit division. The third is to provide some preference for Aspen-based organizations while maintaining a robust valley-wide program. And the fourth is to shift all grants to multi-year funding through a biennial cycle.
John, you go through each of these?
Yes, sir.
The only one I don't understand is two.
Okay. So what's the budget? So, you know, for a long time, we've talked about the city grants budget without talking about our Health and Human Services specific IGAs. I feel like it's the same cause going to some of the same organizations and that we really should be including those in our grant program budget, even though they're non-discretionary. So you see the existing IGAs, there's nearly $600,000 of non-discretionary support, but it is going into this space.
Wait a second, none of those say non-discretionary on them, which...
The gray area...
And I'm sorry, I'm looking at the grant type, not the pie chart, so...
The existing HHS IGAs.
Okay. Are 237 on your chart.
No, that's the Health and Human Services discretionary. So everything there except the bottom 593, 840 is part of the discretionary budget.
Oh, gotcha, okay, sorry about that.
So the discretionary budget in the grant program holistically is about 2.1 million, with $600,000 of non-discretionary for a total of 2.7 annually. So quick timeline, and our grant window will open in about two months, in early October. That window will be open for people to complete applications for about two months, and then it will transition into a few weeks of staff review, a couple of months of volunteer review, and then come back to you all for consideration in late March or early April of 2026, with funds distributed shortly thereafter. I will note in an odd to our talk about collaboration and finding ways to reduce administrative burden on our applicants is that common application we spoke of. Our program here at the city is kind of on a polar opposite schedule from our community partners. And so something that we may discuss with council at a future time is shifting the timeline of our grant cycle to align with our community partners to enable that, that common application and other collaboration.
Well, and their timeline is the fall, then? When is the new...
We are, they're, yes, so late summer and fall, and no one is completely aligned right now, but the others are closer than we are. We're a little bit of an outlier.
And, you know, I think some questions had come up regarding timing through Pete talking with me, and I think the concern was that pushing all of our grants this year off another six months more than people had been expecting or used to is a little bit of a hard transition financially for those organizations. And, you know, perhaps we can work towards, you know, two months closer to those guys and two months closer to those guys and phase us into that. And it seems that we could still have a common application even if we're seeing it first because our grant cycle is different. If there are different questions that they're usually asking that we're not, we could include those on our form and try, you know, again, I realize that an organization submitting to the county in October or, you know, they might have come up with some new needs or some, you know, addendum to their form, but, you know, to the extent we can begin lining things up over a period of time, I think that that is, might be a decent approach. You know, because as it is now, it kind of leaves a lot of people hanging. Well, we got this to be able to keep doing that, now let's see if the next one comes through in four months, and let's see if the next one comes through after that. And it would make a lot of sense for an organization to know what it has for a full annual basis.
So here, we want to show you how City of Aspen funding is flowing to organizations throughout the valley. And so you see here, green or A is up-valley-focused organizations, B or blue is mid-valley, C is down-valley Glenwood, and then D is greater Colorado. Those are the, the greater Colorado are typically organizations that are headquartered outside the Roaring Fork Valley but are providing services here in the valley. As you can see, the majority of funding throughout the program does go to up-valley, Aspen, Snows and Woody Creek. That has changed from about 80% of our funding in 2021 to about 65% or so in 2025.
Just for a point of clarification, without naming names, do you have the basis for why it went from nearly 80 down to just under 70%?
Yeah, we, great question, and we'll dig into that a little bit here in, later in the presentation. It's the genesis for the committee recommendation to protect, to provide some preference for Aspen-based organizations. My belief from looking at the data is this is primarily not related to organizations moving out of Aspen and going down-valley, although there are certainly some examples of that. It is primarily related to, some of our highest-performing applications over the last few years have been for large requests in down-valley organizations, particularly in the arts and culture space. So some of our largest awards have been flowing to the mid-valley in particular. So very brief overview of what we're hearing from our applicants, because this is something that we take very seriously, is connecting with our applicants whether they were happy with their award or not. So every year, we send out a, after... So, every year, we send out an after-action survey to everyone who applied for a grant, not everyone who received a grant, but everyone who applied, who even started an application even if they didn't finish it, because we want to find out if the application was too cumbersome or things like that. So, a few key takeaways for council, and there's more information in your packet, is primary service area, you know, is largely valley-wide. So, most of the organizations who we fund believe that they are providing services in the entire Aspen-Glenwood corridor. That's followed in second by organizations whose primary service area is up here, and then gets a little bit more scarce as you flow down-valley. But there are a few organizations who believe their primary service area is in Glenwood. Expectation management is always a challenge in this program. And this is the first year we've asked this question, but I found it interesting, is even as grant awards have been significantly reduced on a percentage of ask basis, about half of our applicants received about what they expected. The other 40% received less than they expected, with a minority not being funded or receiving more than they expected. And then, this last question is something that I'm tremendously proud of, both for our city grants team as well as our steering committee. So, every year, we ask a question that basically says that if, while acknowledging your grant award may be different than what you hoped, to what extent do you believe you were treated fairly and consistently by the City of Aspen Grant Program? And as you can see here, over 90% of our respondents gave us either a five or a four, so the favorable ratings there, with just a couple giving us a neutral rating and two gave us a one.
Thank you. So, John, you have a question?
I was curious, who was the top grant outside of Aspen?
Yeah, so, great question. The largest grant award in 2025 went to Takaw for about $93,000. The others that come to mind, Anderson Ranch received an award of around $90,000, and the Art Base is in the $70,000 range. So, those are some of the organizations that could be responsible for the change Pete noticed there.
Thank you. This sounds like a funny question to ask. It's something I think we should keep our eye on in the future. When I was looking at the list, and, you know, part of our granting throughout the valley is that we know our workforce comes from throughout the valley, you know. We, I'm not even sure what percentage we're up to now with our housing programs or people who are still working in their residence free market. But it's a large percentage, 60% or more, come from down-valley. Yet, the makeup of the mid-valley is changing very much, very quickly, into more second-home ownership and people who've retired from their working career, and, you know, God bless them. That's an earned reward. But it makes me wonder, as a Basalt or a Carbondale become home to more second homes, and that becomes the nature of their community, they're not more, as they are now, a commuting workforce, will those communities be able to pick up more of their regional nonprofits and depend less on Aspen? And, you know, I mean, as we watch our workforce shift, we might be funding nonprofits further down-valley more than the communities that have become second-home communities over time.
Yeah, it's an existential question. You know, what I can say to that right now is that the council's always directed staff to run an impact-focused grant program. So, we are distributing funds to where our volunteers, where our community feels like they'll be the most impactful. And secondly, I'll say that, you know, our steering committee is passionately supportive of maintaining a valley-wide grant program, but also has noticed some of those same trends. So, a little bit later in the presentation, we'll see some, you know, we'll be asking for permission to explore ways to, you know, maintain this valley-wide program while also maybe preserving some of those largest awards closer to home.
Yeah, and I don't know whether it would come through comm dev or maybe even the county or long-range planning, but just to keep a track, an eye on the changes of the dynamics of those communities. You know, when an average single-family home in Carbondale is selling for 1.6 million, you start to say, okay, are, you know, are we, are we getting the resources to the people who need them the most? And are we seeing prorata or proportional type of response from those very communities? Thank you.
All right. So, just to talk quickly about the administrative demand on the program, because it is an important consideration here for council. Our total number of applications submitted have increased 40% over the past five years. So, that, of course, means a significant amount more administrative work here at the staff level. You know, it's almost all of the grant administrator's time, a significant amount of the Strategy and Innovation Director's time and others throughout the city. Mike Carrington from the Wheeler, the executive director, is here tonight as well. He's certainly involved, and others as well. But more importantly, it's a growing workload for our volunteers. And, you know, I thanked them at the beginning of this presentation, and I want to do it again. These volunteers are passionate about making the right decision, about assessing these applications. And these applications are significant, and they take time. What I hear from our reviewers is they're spending an hour to an hour and a half on each of these applications initially. And then we have a pretty thorough debrief as a group to identify areas where each individual sort of saw different things in their application to make sure that everyone's aligned, and then they go back and review them again. So, you know, it's a couple hours per application, and depending on the division, that's 20 to 30 applications right now, and that continues to grow. So, that's a lot of their time, and we are finding it harder to maintain a fully-staffed committees. And I think it's related to this. And then there's the budgetary demand. So, we've talked about this a little bit. But our budget, which is, you know, which is something that we should be very proud of, has grown, has nearly doubled from 2021 to 2025. That is primarily related to significant increases in the Arts and Culture Division budget. There have been some tobacco tax infusions into the Health and Human Services budget, and the community nonprofit budget has increased at the base budget level. The other thing to see here in 2024, you'll notice, from 2024 to 2025, our overall demand actually stopped its exponential increase and even went down a little bit. That is related to a policy change developed by the steering committee and endorsed by council last year to align maximum grant requests to budgets of each division. So, previously, $100,000 was a flat ask for any applicant, and that's been trimmed to about 10% of each division budget. And here's a little bit of background on the community nonprofit side. So, we, one of the recommendations from the steering committee is to provide focus to the community nonprofit sector. And as you can see here, these are 10 different broad buckets that are competing for resources within this division. So, the experience of a reviewer in the community nonprofit sector is to assess an application from an environmental agency with a literacy nonprofit and then a media nonprofit, right? And so, that experience, I think, has really resonated with staff in the steering committee, saying there is a ton going on in this program, and it's really hard to weigh those different types of organizations against each other. A downstream effect of that as well is that there's clearly need in all these areas. And by not focusing on a few of particular importance to council, we're limiting our impact in any one of them, right? And so, there's, the community nonprofit grant remains the highest delta between budget and requests, and that only continues, that continues to expand. And, you know, for now, I don't know what off the top of my head, but I think the average award amount in community nonprofit from a percentage standpoint is about half of requests, or a little less.
I'd like to just ask a question or make a comment. Years ago, environmental requests were usually paid for coming from the Open Space and Trails Fund, and at some level, reviewed by our Open Space Committee, to, you know, or the Parks Department itself to say, we recommend this, we don't recommend that. And so, I'm kind of looking at which of these can be pulled out of the larger community nonprofit to, you know, maybe make the challenge of comparing very different organizations and needs a little simpler. The other strikes me is early childhood, and is that something that we could ask our kids-first board to really, you know, let's pull those out of this mix? And have an existing board and a currently existing board or agency take those on? That doesn't take care of a lot of what you're dealing with, but it would limit it a little bit more.
Sure.
That's my first comment.
Yeah, I think from a budget standpoint, that is something worth exploring. I would be hesitant to decentralize our grant-making process. I think something that we should be proud of here is that we've been able to ensure that every applicant has a similar experience and is treated in the same way. So, you know, wherever the money comes from, I would encourage us to keep a centralized application process. So, that's the background, and now we'll ask for council input on these questions. I want to make sure that there's any sort of background kind of questions, that there's a space for you all to ask, or we can move into asking for your input on specific questions.
Well, just on clarifying that last comment, what I was suggesting could be the same application process, but that the review committees would be the ones with the expertise in that. So, it's not coming up with a different application process. Okay. Thank you. Council members, any other questions before we dive into some of this?
I'm happy to allow Steph to explore this recommendation. I don't know if you already have a specific partner in mind that you feel comfortable talking about at this point in time or not, but happy to let you explore this and come back to us with.
Yeah, there's two viable candidates, really, which is Pekin County or the Aspen Community Foundation. And we really feel like there's a way for the city to identify a niche that, within this space, that these funds can support and rely on the expertise of our community partners, who frankly spend more time in this world and understand it better than we do, to allocate these funds, you know, within their existing programs and with some caveats and general direction set by this council.
Okay. Well, Bill, thanks for sending something. How many people are in agreement with that direction on this item? Christina's nodding yes, John's yes?
I think increasing community impact, but further collaboration instead of overlapping with community partners is a great idea.
Yeah, okay. So, you have agreement on that?
Great.
It'd be nice to get a report back.
Yes, of course.
At a certain level, once the monies have been dispersed and it starts rolling.
Yep, I would expect that to take effect in 2027.
Okay, thank you.
And we will certainly be back with an infamia or another work session before then. So, this is a recommendation to provide focus for the community nonprofit. So, this is something that council can provide input on now, or we can have a follow-up work session to identify areas of particular priority for council within this. But I guess there's two questions here, which is the first is, do you support narrowing the priority areas? And we're happy to bring that slide back up of all the different buckets. And if so, would you like us to have another session or to identify those areas? Alternatively, the steering committee can make that recommendation and present it to you in infamia.
All right. Anyone with early thoughts on that one?
Just going to agree, I understand your confusion.
Thank you. Just going to agree, I understand the difficulty of this section.
Can you flip back to that one slide that lists the different ones? And what do you mean by post-secondary?
So, that's a great question. These are categories that the Regional Greenwich Collaborative have come up with, so that we are speaking the same language.
Yeah.
I think that is around college support for.
It's intermediary, it's intermediary support between college and high school.
Of individual students?
Not of individual students, of organizations that work in that space. So, let me see, we can pull up an example.
We can either get that to you now, or if it doesn't come up, we can follow up with you. That's a specific example from that.
All right. Well, let me ask my council members, first question, maybe, how do you feel about the idea of the same application but using a kids-first board and the Parks and Open Space boards to evaluate the early childhood and environment grant recommendations? That would pull two out of this pile to create a little more focus.
May I ask a clarifying question before you go down that path? I think part of the presentation here is to say, if you limit the amount of scope and the amount of different types of efforts that you're going to fund, you have more resources to drive towards the ones that are maybe the most important for you. That creates basically a higher award level without actually increasing the pool of money.
Right.
What you're speaking to and having somebody else make decisions about, is this a valid ask or not ask? I don't know if that also includes the monetary amount, but if it's still competing out of that same bucket of money, it's not really adding support?
Well, I can understand that. I guess this graph is not quite all the information we need to be able to look at this, because I'm looking at community engagement, and I'm thinking, was that coming from the Arts and Wheeler Fund?
These are all funded by the general fund.
Yes.
These are all general fund. Okay, that helps a lot. And so, but why is early childhood being funded not from the early childhood tax?
So, we currently don't have a grant program running out of the Kids First Fund. And so, obviously, there's an opportunity to do that, but as you do that, obviously.
Yeah, there's less money there.
Take resources away from there, but it does then still free up your general fund dollars. So, there's a give and take, and it depends on how much you want to start contributing to the granting organization-wide.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I have not been through your grant cycle yet. Bill and John might be a little more familiar with the whys, but I was just totally unaware that we are supporting early childhood education outside of the Kids First Tax.
Yeah, and it's a great point, and I think speaks to the tension this program is currently holding in the community. If we refer back to the strategic focus area that guides eligibility for this program, it's the City of Aspen supports and enhances nonprofit organizations to which create and deliver high-impact community programming. And I think what we found in practice is that is a pretty broad term that isn't narrowing the eligible organizations for it. So, what has functionally happened is organizations who aren't eligible in Arts and Culture or Human Services are functionally automatically eligible to apply for a community nonprofit grant. And that's. And that's the question I think we're really driving at for this council. Is that, is that an appropriate use of this bucket? Or would council like us to suggest, to, to, to take priority suggestions from you or suggest them back to you for ways to, to narrow the eligibility for this program similar to the narrower eligibilities for the other two?
Yeah, I think, I think said really concisely is, is we've never had a conversation about trying to grant out to early childhood programs. They just started showing up in that bucket.
And, and in a humorous anecdote in our research for this presentation, Ariel found a memo from 2001, asking council the exact same question, saying, basically throwing their hands up and saying, we don't know what to do with this program. And while I, while I won't say, think, we, we feel that way, I think that, that, that lack of clarity persists.
Yeah.
I'm happy to jump in with my thoughts.
Okay.
Yes, I'm supportive of narrowing this to areas of sort of greatest community need or preference. I'd prefer that you come back with sort of, you slash the, the committee, come back with, with some thoughts on that. I also suggest you explore minimum application amounts as maybe a way to sort of filter out some of these low-impact, high...
Cost.
Review effort applications. You know, like I, I, I just am trying to write my brain going, you know, what's a $5,000 grant really doing for an organization or an effort? And is that worth our volunteers and your time to review? So maybe that's a different layer or an alternative layer for, for this sort of filtering?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a really good point. I will say something that, that we've discovered in, in, in our recent research is the immense value for organizations applying for other grants that City of Aspen Support carries for them. But if, if there's a, if, if the rest of council supports us exploring that, we have some ideas in which we can maintain that support for those smaller organizations in a way that, that is less time-consuming for everyone, that we can go back to you with.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Ultimately, it's not our job to like, figure out the best way to support them. It's our job to support the community in the best way possible. So if we're spending more time and effort and money than it's worth, then I don't think we're supporting the community in the best way possible.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. One, can I, just really quickly, the, the thing is for me right now, to, to give you advice, I'd need to see who's been in that category. You know, I, I know it's, you know, the larger chunk, but without, and, and I'm not saying we should do that right now, but what I'm saying is that it gets really hard to say, narrow it without really knowing who really has been in that bucket in terms of the different organizations. So, you know, because the one thing strikes me, I don't see in that language description, and maybe that should come forward, is safety. Which, which of these organizations may assist with our community, safety and, and things like that. And then probably all do at some level, but it, it might be a new standard to, to look at. Christine?
I understand, I think, the intent of narrowing down the ask from community nonprofit, and I trust, again, the work that you've put into this. I do worry a little bit about unintended consequences for nonprofits that might not get traditional funding from other areas and have come to see this as a source of, of revenue and sustainability for them. That's just my larger question around this. And so, if, I'm not saying don't look at it, but that's a question I'd have if you come back about this of, kind of piggybacking on Rachel, who, who does this affect and where do they go if they can't come to us for this anymore?
Yeah, and, and we absolutely will send you the, the list of applicants. I, I think the, the fundamental question here, right, is, is the, is the purpose of this grant division to provide that kind of support? Because if the answer is yes, we can, we, we'll continue it. The, 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 the cost of that, right, is our highest, our highest-reviewed community nonprofit significant request, I think got 45% of its request, right? And so by creating this breadth, right, the consequence of that is, is the, the community's most prized applications, you know, are, are perceiving, you know, less than half their request. So it's really a, a, a wide and shallow or narrow and deep question, and it's hard.
Yeah, it's hard, but it puts a lot of value judgment on organizations, which is tough.
Yeah, I agree. The other thoughts that really come up related to this would be, because I'm imagining this is going to come back to us, you're going to take some feedback, you know, mull things around, it's going to come back to us. Is there any reason that, that category should be split into other categories? I mean, there, there might be some easier ways to, to sift it, so to speak, and, and get like-kinded things together and others that have some common thread and to be evaluated against each other. I don't know, but I'm just saying, take a look at, are there other category splits that, you know, should be there? Are they too small? Maybe environmentally has three or four groups? And so a review committee could look at, you know, three or four topic areas or something like that. But the other question that really comes up with this is, is part of the problem, again, depending on council as a whole's direction, that we should potentially increase the bucket, the size of the bucket that gets distributed? You know, I, that, that's, that's a council decision, and that's just, I'm not saying we should make it big enough everyone can get to 100% or anything like that, but I, I think that, you know, I was here, I think others were waiting to get sworn in the night that the grants were done. And, you know, there were certainly organizations that I would consider having been valuable to the community, particularly the support for the Ute Indian Organization, and that's a little bit of our heritage and our burden perhaps is the people who've taken over this valley to honor the predecessors. And so I was, you know, concerned that that one didn't go through at the level that would be more sufficient. And I did hear at the time, from some at the council table at that time, saying, well, we maybe, we need a larger bucket to, you know, if we're gonna, you know, if we're cutting these guys back so bad. And I, I know others have tried to look into this to me, but it seemed like the radio stations in K-Jackson Grass used, used to split some sort of fee from the county translator system. Now, I don't know if they're, that's not getting that fee anymore. Is that what's happened or, but that, that's maybe why the, the ask from the city has gone up, is that those things have disappeared, but they were always a, a big part of the county translator system for the radio station. So that was a little bit of a surprise to me as well. So, that's the only thing, is I think, you know, we should talk a little among ourselves as we look at the budget, and don't worry, we're aware there's a recession coming, and we're worried about those things as well, and overspending ourselves or letting people think, oh, I got $10,000 this year, I'll get $10,000 next year. Well, maybe we won't have the same resources.
And budget increases are always an option, of course. I will suggest that, that in the event that, that the budget is increased, they're accompanied by a few structural changes to ensure that we don't have ask inflation, to meet budget inflation, and we end up in the same place we're in now.
Good point. Thank you. John, your thoughts on this broader topic?
I think we should have a broader focus for it, around recommendation, recommendation three, or...
Two or three, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been set up here. It's been kind of the junk drawer department for grants. And I'll go along with Steph's recommendations to figure out a way forward through this, because nothing's happened since at least 2010.
Yeah.
John, you said broader focus, do you mean narrower focus? You think we should do?
Yes, actually, that is what I mean.
Thank you. So what, what we'll do here is we'll get with the grant steering committee to make recommendations on both category name changes, figuring out if we need our own categories in lieu of these regional ones that make more sense for this particular division, and come back to you all with a little bit more structure here to have a follow-up conversation.
That sounds great.
So, third is to provide some preference for Aspen-based organizations. This is another one that, that's more of a philosophical question, that then it sounds like we're going to have a follow-up conversation. So I think the, the details will get worked out here, I'm sorry, in, in, in a, in a follow-up session. But what this is really about is, is staying true to, to, you know, the historic core of City of Aspen grants, right, which does provide support up and down the valley. But perhaps there's a way to make sure that the majority of funds continue to stay up here supporting organizations with a focus in, in Aspen. This could look like, and, and again, this is, the steering committee will, will work on this, that this could be some things like, you know, having a different maximum grant award for Aspen-based organizations and organizations outside of Aspen, things like that, that, continue that broad support, but provide a little bit of preference for people in town.
I was just going to ask out of curiosity, what, you, you told us the top three that were out of Aspen, what were the top three in Aspen?
They're also all arts and culture.
Okay.
So...
Music Fest.
Like Music Festival, Aspen.
Music Festival, Jazz Aspen, Snow Mass, and...
Art Museum?
No, not, not the, Theater Aspen, I think, was, was the third. And we'll, we'll, we'll send you the requests and awards for last year, so you have that information.
Thanks.
Yes, I, I like this recommendation, but with the caveat that, what does it mean to be Aspen-based? You know, like, do, do all I have to do is go get a mailbox at the UPS store and call myself Aspen-based, but have all my staff working down the valley? So I encourage you to sort of think of what it means to be Aspen-based, and is there, is there sort of additional criteria or alternative criteria, I should say, to being Aspen-based that's maybe more focused around serving primarily Aspen residents or serving a, a certain percentage of your customer base? I don't know what the right term is for that.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for that concern. I, I think there's, there's, and it's certainly top of mind for us, too, there's two ways, right? The first is, is a physical location in Aspen, so that's not a PO box, that's a physical location within the Aspen urban growth boundary is typically what we've used for Aspen. And the second is that, that grant question that we asked, that we shared with council a little bit earlier about the organization's primary service area. And so there are a few organizations, right, who maybe have a PO box in Aspen, but their primary service area is also Aspen. So this will be the, for the grant steering committee to come back to you all with, but the, that would be the, the two ways we'd handle that to ensure legitimacy.
I think the latter might be almost more important, because you could, you said physical presence, you know, I saw there's a sort of handwritten signboard on Main Street in Old Victorian, and some guy rents out some individual office spaces. I think he rents some basement office spaces for like $800 a month or something like that. You know, are we going to encourage people to go do throwaway leases like that just to have an Aspen presence? So I, I think it needs to be some sort of thoughtful blend of the two, and maybe with more emphasis on the latter than the former.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you. It's about where the services are delivered, as opposed to how they get there in some level. When you really look at it, the Red Brick Arts and Recreation Center, in many ways, the driving force behind it was all the nonprofits' offices were being driven out of the valley. And so people are like, well, why is there office spaces? Unless you want the whole thing to move out of the valley, that, that was part of it. So some of its performance, some of its office. But, you know, realistically, when these organizations are trying to keep their budget down, they're not going to want to pay Aspen rent, and so we understand that. I would simply modify your comment to my comment a little bit to say, it's, it's not just residents, it's workforce. You know, we, we just have to keep our mind on who keeps our town running all the time. And that number of local employees is, is continuing to dwindle, and, and the, and the job demand continues to grow.
So, to, to clarify, you would like to ensure that organizations serving the Aspen workforce or Aspen residents are prioritized?
Well, for me, my prioritization would, for, for out of Aspen-based or however we want to talk about it, would be about human services, health and human services, food security, that sort of thing. I guess I'm a little less concerned about arts outside the valley, Aspen-based.
Yeah, the, this would primarily be for the community nonprofit and the arts and culture division.
Right.
The health and human services, most of those organizations are located outside of, of Aspen, but, but serve valley-wide, and I wouldn't expect the steering committee to make a recommendation that would change that.
Yeah, okay, well, that, that's all I was saying, is I think that we want to make sure that the, the type of food assistance and family assistance issues are not just Aspen-based.
Sure.
Whereas if we want to make the Wheeler Grant Funds a little more Aspen-based, I'm, I'm certainly fine with that.
Okay, great.
Other comments or modifications on that? Is everyone...
I agree with the recommendation and echo Bill's concerns about what Aspen-based means.
Yeah.
And, and I, I, I will just say, if, if we want to get, the, the hazard of getting too specific, right, is, is that we really don't have a way to track Aspen workforce support for these broader organizations, right?
Right.
And, and we've, we've tried to ask that kind of data before, like, are you serving Aspen residents? And, and let, I don't trust the data we're receiving back. And so I think we have to stay relatively broad in order to be effective here, because otherwise it's, it's going to be too challenging to administer. So the, the last recommendation that we have is to shift all grants to a multi-year grant. So, one of, one of the, the recommendations from the consultant report who assessed the grant program right before the Strategy and Innovation Office took it over was multi-year granting. It, it's pretty well-established, grants best practice, right? It, it creates certainty for applicant organizations that they have funding for multiple years. It reduces the amount of time they have to spend asking for money instead of implementing within the community. And then it has the additional benefit for the grant makers of, of reducing the administrative cost of the program. It's something that we experimented with as an option for applicants over the past few years, and frankly, it didn't work as an option, because the, there was a bit of a scarcity mindset where we wanted to preserve funding in case a better idea came up next year. And so what ended up happening is, is two-year requests were frequently denied and one-year requests were, were approved instead. And that really led to, to the dissolution of multi-year granting over, over the last couple of years. And the steering committee thinks it's, it's time to, to rethink the way that we do this by, by moving all of our grants to multi-year. So that reduces, you know, that, that concern of preserving funding if every grant we give is for two years, and then applicants only have to come back to us once, once every two years. So the structure would be, we would have certain divisions, we'd, we'd have a grant cycle every year, but only for certain divisions, right? So maybe one year you'd have arts and culture, and then they wouldn't come back to us for two years. And then, in, in the other year, you'd have health and human services and community nonprofit. So, you know, the, the amount of applications we would get would, would go down by half. The, the consideration there, right, is, you know, an organization that wasn't given funding or that, that, you know, maybe wasn't in existence or didn't apply would have to wait for two years in a worst-case scenario to, to have another chance instead of one.
You know, I, I like the idea in general. I do concern, and maybe it would be taken care of by knowing that we have this off-cycle grant type of thing. And I, I don't want to encourage that, but a lot can change in two years, and particularly with the federal and state budgets that we're seeing in terms of services. And I don't want to encourage off-cycle grants for arts groups or others, you know, but let's, let's keep an open mind to, that circumstances can change a lot in two years. But otherwise, having a two-year surety for an organization can be really very beneficial to, to their budget and to their future fundraising, you know? So I, I can understand why you're making that request. Those are my just first effect comments, but let's see what everyone else thinks.
I think it's a logical step. Applications down by half means, means the workload will be cut in half, and I think it's, makes perfect sense to me.
I do have a question about, are you done?
Yeah.
Sorry, John? You're good, okay.
You're good, okay. It can create certainty, but could it also create uncertainty for an organization that didn't get the amount that they want, and then they're locked into that for the next two years? And they kind of have to deal with that in a way. I mean, we've served on a nonprofit board together and know how important some of these grants can be to organizations, and so when you don't get the full amount, you lose that hope of being able to come back next year for more and are sort of locked into the disappointment of lower funding.
Yes, that that is certainly a consequence of this. There are a a couple ways to mitigate that. We're asking council on a couple slides about creating a a new fund for council to be able to have funding to respond to these off-cycle requests and potentially to respond to emergent community priorities that are that are important to council. So there's an opportunity to be addressed there. But yes, it it does increase the stakes of this for for nonprofits. There are there are consequences.
That raises another question for me. Are you finished, or I didn't wanna? Okay. I I I think this is something that has been asked about before, but if someone either receives radically less than they had hoped for or had in the years past, or is turned down, all right, do they get counseling about what was wrong with your application or how you can improve your application in the future?
It's something we would like to improve on. We've not, we've not had the capacity to do that to the extent we'd like in the past. I think it's also a challenge as the grant administrator to also be providing counsel on.
Well, could it come from the committees themselves?
It it that's that is that is something that we're working on for this year, is to provide a committee comment that that does our best to to consolidate the viewpoints of each committee member and and turn that into something that's actionable. That's been something that's been a challenge to to successfully get in the past, but that is an area of focus for us moving forward.
Yeah, it just seems to me that, again, I appreciate and support the idea of a two-year grant cycle, but in preparation to go into that, we're going to need to spend more time with the applicants in advance, especially the first time it's rolled out, that, you know, 'cause it's it's gonna be that live or die, you know, I either get it or I don't. And and am I getting everything they asked for? And I've only been around for three years, and these guys have been around for 20 years, and they have their applications dialed in, and I'm still trying to figure out what the committees want. And so I I think as we move towards that multi-year, you need to budget in some real time. And, you know, I'm thinking of, you know, it sounds silly, but, you know, Apcha having HOA classes and other people having, you know, classes that, you know, you want to apply for these, you, this is what we're gonna be expecting, and this is how we need you to prepare it. And whether that becomes a booklet that you produce online, and doesn't have to be, but please ask us questions for anything you don't understand. But, you know, this is where a transition needs to be done very smoothly. And and assisting these people into where we're going.
And that's something that we'll be able to do effectively with arts and culture, because if 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 an applicant didn't receive what they're hoping for in arts and culture, it was related to application quality. If, in the community nonprofit space, unfortunately, the feedback is, you're a really highly rated application, and unfortunately, the the, you know, there is 400 or $500,000 budget and $1.2 million in requests, and that math just doesn't work for you. And so, you, we we can absolutely help people get better. I will say, you know, for two of our divisions, the it is it is just a a demand issue, not a performance issue.
Okay, so you're feeling the applications are coming in pretty good already?
For for community nonprofit in particular, very, very highly rated, it's just, it's just, you know, we've we've tried to help, and unfortunately, the answer is, it's it's just stress on the program. I I I do wanna clarify, it sounds like maybe council is is providing direction here to to slow roll this. This was something we we were planning, if approved, to implement in this upcoming cycle in October. So I wanna make sure that we're aligned there on cadence.
Was or was not?
We we were preparing to implement this in in October, but if the mayor.
I I'm okay implementing it for the following year, but I I do want you to think about how everyone entering our process is somewhat on an equal footing and that people understand this well in advance and understand that that two years of their future funding is on the stake.
Absolutely.
With how well they prepare their application and be available to answer questions.
We have very well-attended training sessions, both virtually and in person, for all of our potential applicants before the the season starts, so we'll make sure to include it there. We'll have it on our website. I I feel good about our ability to broadcast program changes.
Great, okay, okay. So no, I was not saying we should slow roll it.
Thank you.
I think I've signaled that I'm supportive of this, but I wanna point out that this is going to increase the pressure on the off-cycle grant requests. And I think we should contemplate, and you should discuss with the committee, tightening up the criteria to mitigate that increased pressure on those off-cycle requests. We gotta sort of stick to this process as best as we possibly can.
Yeah, and and that's something that we can come back to council with as well. The regional off-cycle request is really intended for Health and Human Services organizations, right? So if that's if that's a criteria that this council is willing to is willing to support, we can make sure that that folks who are interested know that's your support, but that we 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 can have a more robust conversation about that in an upcoming work session as well.
Thank you. Any other?
That's it. So now we have two questions for council, and and the delineation here is that these are not revenue-neutral. So these are, could be about potential new programming or establishment of a of a budget. So the first is around an arts and culture capital grant program, asking council if they wish to support the establishment of a of a program. We did, we we have tried this as a pilot several years ago with a with a smaller cap, it provided up to $50,000 in in support for small capital projects to organizations who owned or had a long-term lease within the Aspen or in growth boundary. It was not continued after one year due to relatively low demand. The number of eligible organizations within the arts and culture space that met those criteria was in the low teens. And it it turned out there just wasn't a ton of demand for for that particular program. And it's certainly something that we could try again with a new twist, if council supports it.
Let me make a comment here. I talked about larger capital grants in the Arts Fund during the campaign for election, and that I thought we should structure something. And I'm talking about larger grants. And I, you know, when we first were able to pass the question to on the Wheeler, I had suggested to Sarah O that we needed some structure because various groups were going to come at us over time and make a run at us, and we wouldn't have a structure. And it would be a one-off here or one-off there with future councils. And I I think we've already seen that with some citizens very interested in putting a ballot question on to take $10 million from the Wheeler for the school district, for the libraries, and for the district theater. And I would be supportive of some sort of grant for them, but I don't wanna do it as a one-off, and I want it within a context. And we have a lot of very great art organizations, and they always come up with new capital needs. And, you know, you can't say, oh, okay, well, here's public tax dollars for this school, and what about the community school? What about other schools? Or what about other art organizations that offer classes and involve the youth and are doing beneficial work? And so I I had always conceived of something that you would work out with your finance committee, with the Wheeler Board, Grants Committee, and council to make something that, you know, hey, if Wheeler funds ever get to this level, program's discontinued until it restores itself, that it's matching grant, that it's a percentage that of a project that is some given percentage. Now, I I thought about, you know, maybe no more than 15% on a $10 million project or, you know, some sort of ratio, and only really accept one a year and only grant one a year, because I'm very protective of the Wheeler Opera House and its reserves and the other types of arts grants that we already make from that. But I I think it's, you know, there are significant funds there now. We don't know that the housing sale and resale boom will continue forever, which funds that fund, and we need to be cautious of it. But I I think having some structure is very important. And again, I was not thinking about $50,000 grants, I was thinking about some of the larger capital needs that we see coming down the pike. And I, those were just kind of the rough suggestions, in that, you know, once you applied, that was it. You you could not reapply again for another 10 years or 15 years. It wasn't a multi-year, keep applying for capital grants and things like that, because the Wheeler Fund is not unlimited, and the needs of the Wheeler will go on. And, you know, we haven't really even talked about, which we may at some point, past councils have, what sort of break-even point do you want, or subsidy point, do you want, rather, for the shows at the Wheeler versus more affordable tickets for some of the locals? So there's there's issues there with with how that budget's managed. But I would love to see some concepts come forward for larger capital grants. And I see it really, in my mind, as being protective of the Wheeler, because otherwise we are going to see somebody put a citizen initiative ballot question on the ballot that takes X amount from that fund automatically to a certain given nonprofit or not. And so if that's what we're kind of talking about here, that's that's what what I, again, I I talked about, that I saw a real need for that. And it was only before the Wheeler question was actually asked that summer, there was a proposal by three or four people to put a ballot question on to take 100% of the funding for the district theater up there. And, you know, I'd love to be a participant with the theater and increasing art venues, but then you really get into all the the management questions of when is it available for the general public to 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 book? And who would have authority of what type of shows could be there? And what what would be the upkeep commitment by the school district for capital upkeep after a grant happened? And will they commit to having the teachers for a program like that with the budget crunches? And so there's all sorts of really tough questions if if somebody was asking the city to fund this entirely. But to do some grants and to be available to do grants and to grow our arts community that are are working in conjunction with the Wheeler and providing amenities for our community and our guests, I I think we we need to find a way to cautiously and slowly be able to disperse some of the revenues we have. So that's my pitch, saying, go ahead and help us develop that sort of program. That's me. How do other people feel about something like that? Bill?
I agree with a lot of what you what you've said. I would like to find a way to sort of expeditiously support the district theater, for one. I would really like this to be designed with a primary focus on big grants, not small grants.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
You know, I think you should go to the the committee and sort of talk about what that minimum threshold is, but I think it's critical that there's a minimum. This shouldn't be to buy art supplies, this should be for major.
Capital.
Meaningful CapEx projects that that really shape the future of our community or the arts and culture aspects of our community. Significant number of zeros on those numbers is would be my guidance. This should probably be something that isn't heard on demand, it's done every couple of years, every three years, four years, five years, I don't know. But these are things that should have plans that are well-fleshed out already, a lot of thought and effort has been put into them. Give us an avenue to be a meaningful contributor to them, but but not in dribs and grabs and and big impactful, big swings. Thanks.
And the one thing I had kind of put on it, I don't know, I agree with what you're saying, Bill, but that it should be a matching grant, that.
Yeah, you mentioned that, and I liked that.
Yeah, 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 we're not, we're not gonna ever be 100% of anybody's anything.
I think you mentioned 15, which feels very low to me, but but I agree with the concept that.
Yeah, and I I wanted to see what they come back with.
Yep.
Yeah. John?
I I would like to support an art and called arts and culture capital grant program for precisely the reasons I overstated here. Thanks.
Thanks, John. In support as well. Yeah, so just we'll keep kicking some ideas around, get some structure, come back with a couple of alternatives.
I do have a couple of quick questions to help us come back to you with a with a structure for a productive conversation. So I I feel good about our ability to design a a program, right, that makes sure that 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 these these requests would be considered in a competitive fashion and not council reviewing them one at a time. Things like that, I I think are are pretty easy to to handle. A couple of things that I do wanna get a quick take from you all on would be eligibility broadly, total budget you're comfortable with, say, on an annual basis. And then the the sticky one, right, is cost overrun. So so tolerance for council for for organizations coming back. We all know how cost inflation works in construction. Here, you give $1 million for a $4 million project, the project is now $8 million, what's council's willingness to re-hear applications for things like that, I think we need to be prepared for.
Okay. Frankly, we need more information to be able to answer those questions for you. So we would need, what is the current Wheeler fund balance? And again, I I see this as conversations with the Wheeler when you're starting to talk about larger chunks of money, like as we are. So, you know, there, I only have it roughly in the back of my mind, their annual operating is a little less than $9 million, there's how much we're giving out in grants and support for the Red Brick already, you know, what would, you know, what has the market been doing, and what would the market do if it went down 20%? You know, we we need to be able to look at numbers before we can give you a total, that's why I was trying to look at percentages of projects. But we could see someone come in, we have a $40 million project. And so that's where, for me, to center 15% was why you wanna be able to, you know, have some limits. And maybe you have a percentage that's based on the size of the project, per se. For me, and everyone else, please weigh in afterwards, I would say this is within the urban growth boundary. I'm not sure we have arts facilities out at the Airport Business Center yet, but this is an Aspen-based thing. This is not for T-Call upgrading their stage. And the last question you asked was?
Just just like tolerance for a follow-up ask, that'll that'll help us come back to you with a more a a structure, is it it's a one-and-done kind of thing? Or, you know, I I think.
One-and-done.
Great.
You know, if someone's estimates are not right, they've gotta find some more angels.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need for now.
Thank you.
So the second one is, does council wish to increase funding to support the off-cycle grant requests that we learned about earlier in the in the presentation, right, creating a a dedicated source or increasing an existing source to have funds available to support those requests? And then, you know, also to perhaps support other emergent community needs with the move to a biennial grant cycle, to have an ability for council to recognize an area to quickly to allocate funds and quickly provide support to that area.
I think yes, but noting the concern that's been brought up, that we'll probably see more of these with the moving to two years.
Yeah. I I find an interesting dynamic on this. By saying, here's a fund for off-cycle requests, you're kind of guaranteeing you're gonna get more off-cycle requests versus hearing things where people are coming in because, hey, this just got cut, hey, this is an emergency, hey, this is an emergent need we can really take care of, we can make a general fund allocation. You know, we we can move money around. And and I I would rather do that than kind of sing out a shingle that says, we take off-cycle grants and we've put aside $250,000 to deal with it. You know, I I that's just the only issue I I would have concern with.
I agree, it seems like mixed messaging.
Yeah.
No, for me.
Great. Thank you.
We will listen to those concerns. There's no question about it, and they will come. They will come. But I, I just don't think we need to, you know, unless Pete has an invisible line of ink in the budget that he holds on to for secret purposes. I, I don't think so. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We can all tell a lot of hard work and thought went into this. And so thank the review committee members. Thank you, Ann, for coming in and listening to us. Do you have any comments about?
Tracy.
And Tracy in the back. I know, I got a view plane blocker here. Do either of you have any comments you'd like to make to council for spending your time with us? No?
Staff did a great job.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you, and thank you for being here, and thanks for all the hard work.
Rachel, I think Pete needs to leave for the next one, but I have a, I have an info-only memo update conversation I wanted to bring up, which I'd like Pete here for.
Okay.
Mind if we
No, let's, let's flip the order on the info
Great.
item.
Thank you.
What item was it, Bill?
So this was the only item that was in the info-only memo, which was about lumberyard and priorities and ballot language. And I know that I missed the last work session on this, but I just wanted to check in with, with the three of you. My sort of understanding was that there was interest from Sam, I believe, and also Christine talking about, and I may have missed this in the last conversation, so forgive me, to talk about prioritization of certain roles in the community. And the memo doesn't really allude to that. It talks about staff returning at a follow-up work session with information about existing language in the Absor regulations about priority for emergency workers. I'm certainly quite interested in prioritizing certain employment types at the lumberyard. So I wanted to check in with, with the three of you and maybe Sam at a later date since he's not here
Yeah.
about, to make sure that what's reflected in the memo is accurate.
I think, I think it's relatively accurate. I, I think we're going to have to have a number of different work sessions on this. There were some real concerns about, you know, and John may have said it best or someone else who said it, that, look, when an employer has to hire an employee, they're essential. They're essential to that business, whether it's a hotel manager, a restaurant manager, a chef. And to exclude all those type of workers within our communities being non-essential is kind of problematic. You know, it's, it's going to be like the nonprofit pool. How essential are you compared to all these other essential people? And the other challenge, of course, is what happens when someone changes jobs or wants to change their job? They lose their housing in the community. And so when we start talking about essential, do we say all the post office workers for the federal government should have a first priority because getting your mail every day and your bills is essential? Or is it, does it become the fire district when they need more volunteers? Does it become, no, I mean, this is
I, I get it's delicate, Rachel. I, I've heard your arguments on this and many other people's arguments on it before. I totally get it and respect those arguments. But I feel differently. And I do think that there are roles that are more important to this community's health than others. And that there, I think that there are people who serve certain roles in this community who should live closer to Aspen than others. And I don't want to pick on anyone, and I don't want to sort of single out certain roles at this point in time, but I respectfully disagree with your position on it. And I wanted to check in with others individually to see how they feel, if they want to explore this further or not.
Okay.
And I don't, we don't need to get into the philosophical discussion
No, no.
at this point in time. I, I totally understand and, and respect your position on it.
Well, I, just as an addendum, Bill, I think that part of what we discussed is that these other organizations, or great many which employ essential workers, would be part of being able to have a deposit and a lease and get some priority as the tax-paying organization they are, whether it's ambulance, hospital, school district, other essential workers, snowplow drivers, police, sheriff, but that it shouldn't be all the public trust money goes so that those organizations do not have to contribute to their own employee housing needs. And so that, yes, we'd like to create those sort of partnerships with those organizations that employ essential workers, but not say, oh, you guys are off the hook, we'll pay the whole million-dollar subsidy for each unit and your employees can just have priority over the people who actually collect that tax.
I'm open to exploring that, but I think that needs a very, needs to be like a very conservative and, I'm sorry, very concerted and targeted effort and, and trying to identify what those roles are. So I'm open to that approach. I don't know if it's done instead of or in addition to some conversation on, on sort of priority of different roles. But again, I want to sort of hear from everyone.
Yeah, okay.
If, if no one's on board with me on this, that's totally okay. But I did think that there was interest in this, and so I wanted to make sure that there is or isn't.
Okay. John or Christine, whoever wants to
Yeah, I think continuing the conversation on both makes sense and together in tandem.
Yeah, we, this is definitely going to come up again, but I'll just repeat my position as before. It's a slippery slope. Once you start giving people priority for housing, there's going to be people left out. And I, I think every person that lives and works in Aspen feels that they're somehow essential. I don't know. Again, I think we need to talk about it some more, but it's a slippery slope.
It's not without its downsides, and that's why I respect and, and understand your position on things so much. But, you know, if, if you take all of the emotion out of it, and again, I don't want to single out a single role so you can fill in the blanks on what you envision to be sort of the most important to our community and perhaps the least important role in our community. You know, what, what would happen if one of those people was prioritized over the other based on how they work? You know, I think it's important conversation to have, so I appreciate
We're going to continue the conversations on it without a question, and I respect your position as well. I mean, I'd love to be housing everyone if I could. I'm just a little, as I say, concerned about, this has become city snowplow drivers and county snowplow drivers and ski patrollers and instead of the ski company making more housing, I mean, their life safety, they, they are EMTs in their own way in these other organizations. And, you know, again, I, I just, I think, you know, luckily we have a large number of units. It should help fill some gap and maybe part of it is to talk about what percentage of those units is set aside. And maybe you could give us a list of who you consider those essential jobs, how you would rank them, so that we can have an informed conversation about it. You know, I'm tired of having my mail delivered with someone who's in from San Francisco, living in a hotel down in Carbondale, and I'd love this and only getting mailed two to three days a week at best. I mean, and I hear that from a lot of people about how that is an essential service that is just, why isn't the federal government taking care of it? I don't know. But I would be a little worried that the general community would start to feel very excluded from our housing if they're not in one of these specific job types.
Yeah, and to be clear, this is prioritization. It's not exclusion or inclusion, right? It's not saying you can only live in this unit if you work in this role. It's, these are the people that get priority to secure these rental units.
Okay. Very good.
I think.
We'll have further conversations.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Pete. We will be talking with you again tomorrow night.
I'll be here.
Appreciate that.
Got some rest.
You have a familiar face and I think an unfamiliar face. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself, Alyssa Farrell, Administrative Services Director.
Okay.
And also with us, we have Jessica Roberts, the new HR Director. She's been here for a week. She's new, but she's returning. She was our Compensation Benefits Manager previously. She's also, most recently, worked for Garfield County as their HR Director. She has her MPA and her HR credentials, so we're really excited to have her.
Welcome back.
Thank you so much. I'm really looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Thanks, welcome. All right, well, this is the last item. We've had the City Manager Selection Council memo. Would you like to present the three alternatives that you had given us for processes, just for the public's consumption?
Sure, sure. And these aren't the end-all-be-all alternatives. You have a continuum where you have a city attorney with the internal hiring process that was fairly minimal and highly effective. And then you have other options as well. So, so to keep that in mind, the caveat there. And for the public consumption, the city manager position became vacant on February 28th with interim city manager Pete Strucker filling, fulfilling the responsibilities. We advertised, HR advertised internally with an application deadline of July 31st. And with that being said, we have one internal applicant who just left the room, Pete Strucker. Options for consideration, and again, these are options with the caveat that there are many other options to pursue as well. And you have the continuum of, of minimal to more extensive with, if, as, however you decide to proceed with your internal hiring process. One option would be the consideration of moving forward, similar to city attorney, with an internal, your, your council interview panel and proceeding with our Colorado Executive Session considerations and Charter considerations. You may choose to add senior staff members with human resources experiences or attorney legal experience to a panel or other community members to the panel. You may have a community panel. So there's a, an array of options that we've done relevant to best practices for the hiring process. Another option would be how you proceed with requesting for an input within the process. As you proceed with your interviews, council may consider requesting department managers to compile feedback from their teams for the development of interview questions around the skills, competencies, abilities they would like to see in the next city manager. Examples would be what skills or attributes would you like to see in our city manager? What does great city management look like? What does success look like to you? And so on and so forth. There is an option for community meet and greet, where you may choose to meet and greet your, your new potential next city manager, similar to how we've proceeded when there were multiple candidates with our external hiring for the police chief as one example. That could be also done thereafter a selection is made with sort of a community meet and greet tour, if you will, although you have an internal candidate who is, who knows the majority of the community or a large portion of the community. That could be really intentional and focused within that process, too. And the outlines above are just a menu of options for council to evaluate relative to your preferences in the selection process. We're here to support you in any way you deem appropriate or as, as needed. And council may at their discretion evaluate and incorporate newer additional options into the selection process, however you deem appropriate.
And just from the legal aspect, as Ms. Farrell pointed out, you can choose one, you can choose multiple of these. You don't have to do any of them. You can simply announce your finalists. Under the executive session laws, you can interview that finalist in executive session as a personnel matter. Generally, your next steps would be, if you want to select out of the current pool, I think you would give direction to negotiators for us to start negotiating a contractual agreement with your selection. Under the law, you do have to provide notice of your finalists, and generally, we do that on your agenda. And you have to give at least 14 days before you make a selection. The selection generally does have to occur in public. It's brought to you as a contractual, as approval of a contract after you've given direction to negotiators to negotiate the terms of that contract. So just to give you a little sense there, you can either go that direction immediately or you can implement some of these other things that they've talked about. You could do a community meet and greet beforehand and seek feedback from the community. You could do a staff meet and greet and seek feedback from staff. You could do any one of the things that they've mentioned, or if you have other creative ideas, really, there's no limitation on legally what you have to do other than the advisement to the public of who the finalists are and the 14-day wait period. So it's really your only legal requirement.
Will we be making that advisement? Can we add it to the Tuesday night agenda?
You're too late now because we've, we have less than 24 hours to publish that agenda.
Okay.
We could certainly do it on the next date. You also have the option to set a special meeting if you want to speed up the process.
Okay. So we'll, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you. Was there anything more, Kate? Did I didn't cut you off?
I just wanted to provide you of what the legal requirement was. These other things are additional. You're certainly not limited in what you want to do, but I just wanted to be clear, you know, you, you have kind of a range and there is no real requirement that do you, do you do anything other than that 14-day wait period and announcing that finalist?
Okay.
Thank you. Or the finalists, if you want to go back out.
Counsel, as we've reviewed the memo of the potential options or other options we come forward with, I really kind of believe I suggested something like number two, that we ask all the department heads to meet with their staff and ask, what would you want to see in the next city manager? What do you want to see in the leadership going forward? And for those department heads to then coalesce that information and organize it and feed it to us. So it would be a way kind of to hear how some of the departments feel they're going and what the city needs and hear from the rank and file without trying to set up, you know, normally in the past, when I've been in hiring processes and there's panels, you know, three staff or five staff, more five staff, it's when you have multiple candidates. And when you, and you have candidates, they have to compare and contrast these three people's style, their articulation, their appearance, everything. We don't have that sort of chance for a comparison because we have one internal candidate. And I don't think there's, I think it's more about finding the information from the, this very wide-ranging organization, everything from streets to environmental protection, of, of what they see and what they think they, that they want council to know, council should get out of their next manager. And so that's kind of where I had put in the number two. We certainly could also have a meet and greet for any community members that would like to come over and meet Pete at some nice, not-too-nausey local restaurant or, or something. You could maybe do an, you know, lineup as an art museum up, up, up there or wherever. You know, maybe even the lobby of the Wheeler would be available. But we can combine these approaches as well, is what I'm looking for. So going back out, want to hear from you guys, any, any thoughts you have on process? John?
I like your suggestion of the, your suggestion, number two, request for input process. I think that's a great way to empower our staff and learn what it is they want to see and what they expect. And I'd be interested to know that information from staff.
Bill?
For me, I think it's somewhere of a hybrid between one and two. I think it's, I think it's important that we as council, with potentially some HR support and Alyssa's support and Kate's support, have our specific interview process with Pete, probably in executive session. I, I also like this idea of, of sourcing some feedback from department heads and departments, but I want to make sure it's very valuable to us. And asking questions like what sort of skills they'd be looking for is not so valuable to us, I don't think. I think what would be valuable is like, what needs to change? Or what specifically do you need from your new city manager to be able to perform your job better than you're performing it today? And for your department to succeed more than it's succeeding today?
I like that.
Yeah, so
Yeah, these were just random, you know, kind of things. It wasn't
Right, they were a little too like general, what, what was in the memo, and this is not to be critical, just not what, what I need or what I would expect is, I don't need general interview sort of questions answered by the departments. I need sort of how can you be better? And how can your city manager make you better? That's really the type of feedback that would be valuable to me
Yeah.
in making this decision, so
I think we can come up with a series of three or four questions for them to prompt the staff and get it and get it back up to us. And then we use it to educate ourselves and then in the executive session, interviews with Pete to see if he can really deliver what we think we need and what our people think they need.
Yeah, I think that's great. And I also think a meet and greet open to the public is
A nice thing.
Totally welcomed. I think the Wheeler lobby is a great idea. I don't think it should be a restaurant. I think that's too
Noisy.
Noisy and
Small.
distracting.
Yeah.
But I, I think we should do that and, and have some kind of feedback mechanism for people who attend to provide some feedback to us with, with their thoughts.
Christine?
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed. And we also have this option for first-year performance goals on here. I think some of that input from the community and staff and interviews can inform those goals. I think that's a great idea, so that we all have the accurate expectations going into this. I would just also add, I don't know what the timeline is on kind of doing these department interviews and setting up meet and greets, but I'd veer to the side of expediency versus drawing this out a lot longer, so...
Well said. Yes.
One more thing to add, if I might, if you're done.
Yep.
Kate, I think we should have a conversation between you and council on contract structure, if and when we get to that point, when appropriate, and so that we can apply some lessons learned from the past to contract structure for the future. I don't, I'm not sure the way we had things in the past was perfect. In fact, I'm certain the way we had things in the past was not perfect, so would like to sort of go through some key points in the, in the contract structure in advance of you having negotiations, to help make that process smooth and effective.
Thanks on that, Bill. I did have a note for myself, just kind of a question mark on negotiations. The people he would be negotiating with, other than the city attorney, would be working under him at some level, so...
He's negotiating with us.
Oh, that, okay, because you guys kept talking about negotiating the contract as if it wasn't us negotiating the contract. And so that's where I got a little confused, that you just kept using the words "the negotiators." And I was kind of wondering who, because in the past, when I've been on boards, it's always been the council or the board that negotiates that.
So we can have those discussions in executive session. You could choose somebody to sit, to be a representative in our negotiations with him, or you could delegate that task to me. Those are a few options. You can include a staff member, if you wish, but as you point out, that provides a somewhat challenging situation for the person put in that seat. But I think all of those are available to you.
Okay. So it is us. That clarifies it. And we'll get as much support as we need from Alyssa and Kate and others to make that final step.
If I may, I've often provided data at council's request regarding similar contracts around the terms and conditions of the contract, standard benefit options and whatnot, so I tend to do city manager, county manager, data collection surveys, too, and happy to provide insight and information from the last go-around as well, from a benefits perspective.
It would be helpful, I think, if you could update what, what you can versus, from the last round of that.
Yeah.
And have that ready, sort of, as we move forward.
I agree. And would, we would be able to invite her into our executive session as well. So we can get maybe some of the prep that way, even before we invite Pete in. So, okay. That all sounds really good. Did you have any further questions for us?
One point of clarification, if I may, succinctly, is requesting clarification around, if council would like to come up with the three-ish questions, that we could be the conduit and then send out to department heads and their teams, or if you would like for us to suggest a few questions to council, based on what we heard this evening.
How about we set a deadline, that if people have specific types of questions, they will get them to you within two days? And you can send out to us individually the type of questions you think we should ask as well? You know, the wording on this, is that...
So, I just want to clarify, you're speaking about, when you're seeking feedback from department heads...
Correct.
About these information you would find helpful in this process?
Yes.
I think Alyssa's asking, do you, do you want her to prepare three proposed, some proposed questions? Or, again, you said provide a two-day deadline? Are you all submitting any questions you may have?
Yeah. Well, I was just thinking Bill had a very good question that he wanted to, and maybe he would perfect the wording on that and send it to Alyssa.
I think they could perfect it better than I could.
Are you sure?
But I think I shared my sentiment, and I think, it seems like you guys all like the, the general sentiment of that, so...
I like the general sentiment of that. I'd be happy to see Alyssa finalize those questions. You want to send them out to us first, and then see if anybody has any slight wording changes or any additions after they see the questions, and then we'll get it rolling. Then you'll be able to send those out to the department heads.
Happy to, and we'll expedite it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Very good. Anybody have any other final items? Nope. Okay. Well, the work session is over. Thank you, Grassroots TV, for filming us. Thank you, everyone who has listened in. And thank you for the daily news to be here in person. We appreciate that.
Thank you.